Well, welcome, everybody. Going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Clark, will you call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Sted.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
Four present, two absent.
Thank you. And we've got a full agenda, so we'll jump right into it. And the council president will be here shortly. He's held up in a work meeting. And we've got Doug Woodruff and Lana Weber is here also from CCDC. I just wanted to acknowledge you, Lana. I'm not, you don't have to speak. But since you're here, I want to say welcome back. Good to see you. No, we're gonna get it fixed.
All right, there we are. Rock and roll. Well, good afternoon. My name's Doug Woodruff. I serve as the Development Director at Capital C Development Corporation. And I'm going to pull up my slideshow. All right. It's so good to be before you this afternoon. CCDC, as you know, is Boise's urban renewal agency. We're a team of nineteen employees. And as the mayor mentioned, Lana Graybill, I just wanted to recognize you here today as well. And we're governed by a Board of Nine Commissioners, couple of which are here today, Councilmember Sted and Mayor McLean. And we operate six urban renewal districts and also own and operate six public parking garages. Today, I'm here to share with you a little bit about who we are as an agency, the work we do in Boise, and also discuss what's possible together. We had a meeting in January with the city leadership and wanted to take some time today to share the work that has resulted from those conversations. So I'll give an overview of our current districts, our agency priorities and how they align with citywide goals, share some criteria that we find to be influential and successful URDs, and also review what a two-year formation process looks like for urban renewal districts. So starting at a high level, let's talk about current urban renewal districts. So simply put, urban renewal districts are public investment funding mechanisms. Urban renewal districts exist across the state of Idaho, and dozens of municipalities utilize this funding mechanism to reinvest in their respective communities. The public investments made in these districts are made with tax increment revenue generated from redevelopment projects that happen within the district. The chart here on the screen illustrates the taxing districts receive the base value revenues through the life of the district. And the districts itself receive incremental growth for twenty years, which is the standard timeframe for an urban renewal district in the state of Idaho. Upon completion of a URD, the increment revenue generated through the redevelopment efforts of the district are then received by the other taxing districts. So this is an economic development tool that helps increase the tax base upon completion of a district. A couple of takeaways here on this slide that I want to point out is that revenue generation is not immediate. It does take a few years, and it is incremental growth. So it's during the final years that the most revenue is available. And then the other takeaway is that urban renewal agencies can bond with tax revenue to accelerate investments within the districts. So this map shows where the six active districts are located in the city of Boise. The context and objectives of URDs can and do vary. There are four downtown districts known as the River Myrtle, Boise District, West Side District, Thirtieth Street, and Shoreline. The main objectives of those are to create a thriving urban environment. It's really about catalyzing residential infill, providing more civic amenities, as well as walkable streets and expanding mobility choices. In contrast to that would be the Gateway East District, which is at the southeast edge of our city. And its focus is spurring economic growth and quality jobs, focused in manufacturing, logistics, and tech-adjacent industries. And then thirdly, our sixth district is State Street District, which encompasses about a six-and-a-half-mile stretch of State Highway 44 and is focusing investment on transit oriented development that supports VRT's best-in-class route while also inflating existing neighborhoods with more homes and businesses. So we just looked at where districts are. This chart illustrates when districts happen. So each one of these rows represents the lifespan of an active district. And then the black rectangle column represents CCDC's five-year capital improvement plan and where that lands in the lifespans of each one of these districts. You can see in the next five years, there are two districts that will be sunsetting, the River Myrtle or Boise District, as well as the West Side District. The other four districts are in mid-life span to early lifespan. And then just to give a sense of like the level of investment that is underway, this five-year plan contemplates $153 million of public investments programmed over the next five years. So in the next few slides, I'll introduce CCDC's key strategies and share examples that illustrate the type of community investments being made. So urban renewal districts and projects within the districts are multi-layered, and they require a dedicated team with a consistent vision to execute the plan over literal decades. This is why it's so important the CCDC centers itself and its work around five key strategies, which you see here on the screen, economic development, infrastructure, mobility, place-making, and special projects. The actual work happens two ways, the first of which is through public-private partnerships, and the second is through capital improvement projects. In both of these approaches, we strive to advance a mixture of key strategies to ignite diverse economic growth, build attractive urban centers, and promote healthy community design. So let's take a look at a few examples of each. So the economic development strategy is to make public investments and form partnerships that cultivate commerce and grow resilient, diversified, and prosperous local economies. In 2015, CCDC provided conduit financing for the Boise Center East expansion. As that convention business grew, so did hotel demand. The agency has assisted with public infrastructure for seven hotels since the expansion has opened. And this collection of investments really do represent an economic development strategy that's brought more visitors to Boise who are patronizing our restaurants and shops in our downtown area. Another example of economic development is the Park Boy Public Parking System. The agency owns and operates 3,150 structured parking stalls in the downtown core. These garages serve downtown retail, hotels, sports, and convention centers, businesses, and in some case downtown residents as well. It's because of this system that the reinvestment and a dense, walkable downtown has been able to happen. One of the reasons, I should say. Infrastructure is central to nearly all of our projects. What this looks like on a day-to-day is streetscape improvements, undergrounding overhead power lines, upgrading geothermal lines, paving roads, connecting community to IT network conduits. So the strategy is really about improving the public infrastructure to attract new investment and encourage best use of property. And I'd like to share that the impact does go beyond the infrastructure itself. And a good example of this is CCDC's participation increasing in the housing supply in Boise. The current five-year plan includes twenty-three public-private partnerships with housing developments. These partnerships represent about $70 million in public infrastructure investments that will assist with delivering 4,400 homes to downtown. Where possible, CCDC leverages our assistance to gain affordability as well. About 600 of the 4,400 units are restricted, providing opportunities for families to live downtown. And as communities grow, it's important to expand the mobility choices available for people to get around. CCDC's mobility key strategy is just about that, expanding mobility choices that involve multiple transit modes, as well as parking to enable unaccessible downtown and urban districts. Examples of this would be the local match provided by CCDC for the federal grant that helped fund the construction of Main Street Station, downtown Boise's main bus transfer station. Another example would be the Transit Islands on the Main and Fairview Corridor, which provide better facilities for VRT's bus routes, as well as improving safety for bicycle routes along the way. We also include Bike Boy, secure bike parking storage in our public parking facilities. And then the last example I'd like to point to is the multi-year collaboration with the city and ACHD to complete the Eleventh Street Bike Way through our downtown. Our fourth strategy is place-making. We talk about it. And what it's really about is creating a sense of place. We develop public spaces and energize environments where a blend of cultures and concentrated mix of uses come together. Some examples of CCDC's place-making efforts include the Eighth Street Retail and Dining Experience that's flanked by Freak Alley, a very bustling part of our downtown. A more recent example would be Shree Buckner Webb Park, which is centered at, is located at the center of an emerging mixed-use residential neighborhood in west side of downtown. And then would be remiss not to point to the Grove Plaza, which is the civic center of our downtown, where blend of cultural events and activities happen on a routine basis. And then our last key strategy is special projects, which for us is about investing in emerging revitalization opportunities, which includes projects like historic preservation and supporting local arts and culture. CCDC assisted with bringing the Avery Hotel back to life. This is one of many examples where CCDC's assistance with historic facade restoration led to building preservation and reuse. Another example is the agency's acquisition and preservation of the Erman Haeman House, which the agency gifted to the city. And as you know, Erman Haeman House now provides interpretive programming about the neighborhood's history. Regarding cultural assets, the recent historic Neon Sign Gallery opening on Grove Street is another great example of special projects. And this is an example where a cultural asset was turned into a public amenity that attracts people and literally brightens up Grove Street. So that's an overview of how CCDC approaches making public investments and gives a sample of the type of work we're doing. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about criteria for success. And what that's about is, in recent joint planning meetings that I mentioned with city leadership and staff, we've been thinking about the criteria that makes for a successful URD. So I'm here to share that information and the related discussions around it. So to start, and a more important part of a successful URD is when the URD's priorities and the city priorities are in alignment. As seen in current districts, urban renewal districts can be a catalyst to, quote-unquote, "prime the pump" for denser, walkable built environments. And they additionally provide focused investment to implement citywide goals related to housing, mobility, public services, economic growth, climate action, quite a bit overlap with the agency's key strategies there. Climb with city priorities is an important consideration, and there are other criteria that can be examined too to understand if urban renewal districts are a wise investment. This successful URDs often include an ensemble of needs and opportunities, AKA criteria, that are related to citywide services, looking at land use and conditions of property, as well as what opportunities emerge with focused growth and timing and partnerships are key to it as well. Regarding citywide services, this is a pretty big category. It includes everything from affordable housing to public safety, right? Fire and service, police service, as well as community programs, libraries, parks, or climate action programs. Transportation, not just our roads, but also our pathway systems and our transit and transit usage. And utility readiness is is our sewer system, water, power, geothermal capacity, and the like, keeping up with growth. So as we think about these criteria and their relationship to urban renewal districts, I'd like to share that there's sort of two ways to think about it. The first is answering the question, is growth outpacing city services in a certain area? That's a good question for us to ask ourselves. And in turn, we can look at it sort of from the other direction, which is, are there opportunities to invest in city services that will catalyze healthy growth in desired areas? So within any given URD, there are strategic investments being made to help city services either catch up with growth or to help focus growth. Certain land use patterns and parcel conditions are other criteria found in successful URDs. Change in land use patterns often represent, are often present in urban renewal districts. One example of this would be the auto dealerships that were located on Main and Fairview in the west end of downtown that years ago relocated to the edge of town along the interstate. When that happened, it created a significant change in land use patterns in that area of town that has led to some redevelopment challenges. Another aspect of thinking about land use is the conditions of the property. URDs have been implemented in areas of town where a prevalence of declining property conditions were present. This is both public property and private property. And oftentimes, these declining site conditions are associated with underlying site constraints. And what I mean by site constraints is circumstances such as FEMA has updated the floodplain map, and now there are different development requirements associated with developing in a floodplain. Or perhaps there's pre-existing environmental contamination that presents a challenge or even a barrier to reinvestment. So as we think about successful URDs, these are a few of the criteria that can assist with lowering that barrier to reinvestment and help areas overcome these challenges. Another aspect of successful urban renewal districts is the associated private investment that happens. The recent adoption of the Modern Zoning Code focuses growth and activity centers and the downtown core of our city. These changes in development potential have implications on city services, including transportation, utility readiness, and the things I've mentioned. And URDs can be useful as an implementation tool in addressing the evolving infrastructure needs for areas of our growing city. Which brings me to timing and partnerships. This is the last criteria that is present in successful districts. Simply put, urban renewal districts do not work without property owners that are ready to reinvest in their own assets. Additionally, the shared goals of public partners, which we've already covered here, goes beyond city and CCDC alignment and oftentimes does include other taxing districts, ACHD, ITD, VRT, the county and the state. And beyond ready investors and inter-agency alignment, a successful URD starts with a community vision and citizen desire to see investment in that vision. So these are the key takeaways we've arrived at when thinking about what makes a successful urban renewal district. So I'll close my presentation today with a brief summary of the formation process of a new urban renewal district. In general, there's four stages, all of which are led by or approved by you all, the city. CCDC can assist with much of the work upon receiving direction from the city to do so. The first stage of this process, we've coined as to identify. And what that's about is identifying possible areas. And using the criteria we just reviewed, you know, informal assessment and early exploration, can I can reveal some of those areas that could benefit from focused investments? If an area or areas is defined or identified, the city can give directive to CCDC to begin step two, which is noted here as eligibility. At this stage, this is an important place to engage the public and bring them in on the idea and begin to share what is being studied. The work at this point is pretty technical in nature, and it's basically examining the existing conditions. If the area meets state statute eligibility requirements, we would advance to the next step, which is to determine the feasibility. And during this third stage is when significant public engagement is really important. Two things are happening during feasibility, the first of which is developing a master plan framework that identifies the public investments that would be made if a district were to be formed. And then the second piece to it is doing a financial feasibility of that. And that financial feasibility is forecasting what revenues would be generated by private investment that would occur during the district's life, and does that balance with the planned public investments? If a feasible plan does, if we arrive at a feasible plan, the next step would be to move through an adoption process. This typically takes six to nine months and involves a series of public hearings with you all, as well as formal adoption by ordinance. That's followed by a series of filing procedures with state tax commission, county assessor, and other taxing districts. If a district's formed, and we make it through the adoption process, it becomes active the following calendar year, and then would receive its first allocation revenue in the second year the district is open. So just a couple of things to keep in mind is that it takes a couple of years to form an urban renewal district, and then another year or more to have resources begin to be available to start making investments that are contemplated in the plan. So that's all I have prepared to share with you today. And on behalf of CCDC, I just want to offer a closing remark that we stand ready to assist. And thank you for your time and attention.
Well, thanks for the overview, Doug. Really appreciate it. CCDC is an important partner, helping us be able to ensure that the downtown and then other districts have as many investment opportunities as possible. So appreciate it. Are there questions for Doug?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of quick questions. Doug, thanks so much for coming out. And I know in District Three, there's been a lot of discussion on urban renewal district on the Orchard Corridor. And so having this information is really helpful to have a deeper dive into looking at what they do, how the process works, and where they come about. I did have one small question, and that's on your, on the parking garages downtown. You mentioned, are those actually owned by CCDC, or are they a development using funding with CCDC? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, absolutely. The public parking garages are owned by CCDC. Some of them were originally funded with district revenues, but now are operated with the revenues generated by the parking garages themselves. When net revenues are present from the parking garage system, those can be reinvested into either major repairs and maintenance or expanding by adding more garages in other areas of town.
Well, thanks so much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks again.
All right. Now we've got Jessica Dorr, the Director of the Library, with an update on some remodels, renovations at the downtown library. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Jessica Dorr. I am the Director of the Boise Public Library, and I am very excited to be here with you today to give you an update on some of the upcoming renovations that we will be having to the first floor of the downtown library. I would be remiss if I didn't give a welcome to our former council member, Lynn Clegg, who actually, I will be referring to some of the decisions that were made when she was on council. So I was absolutely delighted that she'll also be here. And then I also want to introduce to you Lindsay Urb, who is the Senior Project Manager for Public Works. She oversees facilities, and she has been a true partner, her and all of Public Works, in planning for these renovations, overseeing these renovations. I've learned two really key concepts from her. The first is an owner-occupied building, and how challenging it is to do renovations when we are doing storytime and we are doing reader references. She has really embraced trying to have this work as disruptive as possible so we can continue to provide services to the community. Want to thank her for that. And then she also taught me the concept of value engineering. So you'll hear me talk about how we're using investments in the systems in this building to not only upgrade electrical and plumbing and HVAC, but to use that as an opportunity to improve how we're serving the public. And I'll thank her in advance because I imagine there may be some sort of technical construction-related question that she will be very capable of answering. So today, as mentioned, I want to talk to you about the upcoming investments in the library. These will be the most disruptive to our current services, and they will lead to the most impact. So I thought it was really important to give you an update at this time. Also, we're coming to you early. We don't anticipate that the renovations will start until September. So it is business as usual right now at the library. We are gearing up for summer reading. We've got lots of books on order to support that program, but really are going to use this opportunity to help explain why we're making these investments, what you can expect during construction, and ultimately what that end impact will be. I'm going to share with you a timeline, what the next steps are, and obviously want to identify any questions that we'll need to answer as we go along. I like to start every presentation about the library with a return to our mission. The Boise Public Library is a city department. We work in a city that wants to be welcoming for everyone, and the mission of the Boise Public Library supports that by providing access and opportunity for everyone by connecting people to ideas, information, and community. We are right now in the second year of our facility, I'm sorry, of our strategic plan. We have a strategic pillar aimed on expanding access, and in that, we have a goal of creating library spaces that are accessible and welcoming to everyone. So everything that I talked to you about today is going to help us get to that. And we are talking about our downtown facility. I refer to this as a library at the heart of Boise. It's more than fifty years old. Looks like we're coming up on anniversary later this month. It is also our busiest location today. So we are serving about 900 people visiting each day. I've been watching this number because of all the construction that is going on around us right now. While this number has decreased, this number is holding pretty steady. This is a heavily used location. And it also serves about forty-seven, last year, we served about less, a little less than half of the people that came into a location, came downtown. So our busiest location, largest space, most materials, see the highest traffic. So this is really why in, as we're coming up to some of these major renovations, we're really being thoughtful about how we are thinking about the experience downtown, but also what could that mean for the other branch locations in our system? As I mentioned, a little preview, or a little shout out to the 2020 council, that at that time, when the new main library project was stopped, did some really important things. At that time, they did a facilities conditional assessment, said, okay, the community has said that we will be in the downtown. Said, okay, the community has said that we will be in the Downtown Library. Let's make sure that that Downtown Library is safe and accessible for everyone who comes in and we can serve the public there. So that conditional assessment was done at that time. And a plan was put together to do some major system upgrades. And we have been working through those system upgrades since then. As you can see, there was a little COVID bubble in 2021. But in 2022, these projects kicked off in succession. So in 2022, we had a roof replacement. We put in our first automated book sorter. And 23 started in the fourth floor tower, some of those really important upgrades to make all of our restrooms accessible and meeting the standards set forth in the American with Disabilities Act. And last year, really focused on some of the, what we call back of house work in anticipation of this final phase on the first floor. We did some work, really moving staff away from the front door so we could prioritize that public access. And in that, this is where I really want to talk about the partnership between library and public works. I had some real important investment goals and how we were, what those investments would mean for our usage, safe, accessible spaces, maximum use and flexibility, increased public impact. You could see that in some of the things are, we have the second from right is the adult changing table. That's the first that the city installed in our first floor all user restroom. We've got all our shelving that's coming in is now on wheels so we can move it around for pop-up programming or pop-up partner work. And really thinking, how can we constantly use our resources responsibly and live the values of Boise? Right now, our south parking lot is torn up because we're replacing the geothermal line to the building. This is making sure everything that's going into the building is high quality and it has, you know, making sure we're spending resources efficiently and effectively. This is the slide that I focus on because of how much it allows us to talk about the services we provide for the community. And this is the slide that gets Public Works equally as excited, but in a different way. They want to make sure that they are providing quality interior environments. They've done fourth floor abatements, so all of our spaces are safe for people to be in. The new plumbing and cabling is exposed, so it will be easier to maintain and upgrade over time. They've got a new 30-year roof with safety features on it. So if someone needs to go up on it, not only is the roof new, but it also is safer for people to be on. Somewhere, Chief Niemeyer is smiling because he's seeing this slide of our new fire pump. I hope we never use it, but the fact that we didn't have a fire pump with the capacity to serve the building was very concerning to him and to me. And this is something that we've been able to rectify. And as I said, some of those collaborative office spaces that are really able to support collaboration of staff in a new way. So as I said, we are coming up to the last round of renovations that were started with that 2020 condition assessment. This is the final piece. It is also the largest piece. And it will really focus on two things. One, we want to create a welcoming space for everyone. And two, we want to prioritize children growing up in that library. So the first floor includes our youth services area. And so we've been giving a lot of thought of how to make sure that when they tell the story of what that library meant to them, that they have a vibrant space where they have, can learn to read, meet authors, get to do creative arts. This is really prioritizing their experience. To do that, we're going to remove the current circulation desk. We'll install a new accessible circulation desk in another area. I will show you some images so you'll get to see what it will look like. We'll also install accessible restrooms in our youth services area so that all families can use the library. We'll have expanded space for programs and services, particularly on that first floor where it's easiest for our younger people and people with limited mobility to use. And we also wanted to continue to meet demands for our youth printed materials. I think you've all heard me talk about how we're prioritizing youth printed materials because how important that is to making sure that every child who starts kindergarten is ready to read and every student continues to progress at grade level reading. All right. So I will cut to the chase. And the big investment on this, in the the piece that we will need to work with the community to get through is that in order to do this work as safely, as short a time period as possible and as cost effective, we will need to close the entire first floor for the duration of those renovations. And the reason for that can really be seen on this schematic of the investment. So really, everything in white on that first floor. So we're looking, if imagine you're a bird on top of the library looking down. Everything in white is what will be touched by this. And the reason for that is that all the systems, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC, they all come in through the north side of the building, through our loading deck. And for us to get those final restroom upgrades on the south side of the building, we need to go right through the heart of the library that's at the heart of Boise. And the best way to do this is to completely close the first floor to the public. We still have the second and third floor. We still have lots of places that we can serve the public with adjusted services. But this really is, as we push Public Works, is there a different way to do it? Really came up to having the safest way, the fastest and most cost effective. We've got the public we need and our staff and we really need to prioritize their safety. So one of the things that I want to call out to you is that value engineering and really how we're thinking about adding services and space that will be exciting for the public and the great reveal.
But Jessica before, well, here I am hitting you on the great reveal. This looks beautiful. I love it. I would like you though, because you know Twitter, hell on fire quickly. You said we're closing the first floor, but we didn't address how folks get into the library and can still use the library.
Yes, I will show that. I actually have a photo of that later. We, it is something that people walk by without seeing it. But actually, when you walk into the Downtown Library, you walk through two sets of doors. There's a, that's a vestibule. And actually, after coming in through the first set of doors, there's a second doorway to your immediate right that has an entrance to another vestibule with a staircase and an elevator. And that is how people, I will show you so you'll.
But now let's enjoy this, but I wanted to follow up with the yes, kids will still be prioritized. Yes, you can use the library.
Yes, you can use.
Now let's talk about how awesome this remodel will be.
Yeah, no. And I also, the next question is how long? We're anticipating nine to 12 months. It is a major renovation. Really, because we are replacing so many of the systems in it, we really want to make sure that the contractor has time to do it well. And we've also known from every other construction project in the Downtown Library, there are surprises every time they look at a new system because of the age of the building and its multiple uses over time. So this is artist rendering of when you walk into the building. So you can see immediately how we are really taking advantage of being on the greenbelt, that access to nature and the trees. We should have a beautiful sunset come through this. We are removing the two offices that are currently on there and putting our information desk so that when you walk in, the first face you will see will be a smiling Boise Public Library staff member who says, welcome to the library. How can I help you? Just on the very edge of this image on the left, that is the window for the sorter. So this is where that current circulation desk will be pulled out of. And one of the things we heard from so many people is, I want to see the sorter in action. I want to see it closer. We, when we install it, we put the window in knowing that it was going to be there as well. This is facing the front of it, looking south, so looking into youth services. Obviously, an artist rendering the youth services area won't look like this. It'll look like a youth services area. But one of the things I want to point out is that there are going to be windows inside of the building and we will actually be also be able to put windows on the outside of the Hays Auditorium. We are being able to expand access to light throughout the floor. We'll have additional seating so that people can sit near a window to really make it a welcoming and inviting space. Here is another image. This is again, when you've come into the building and you are looking this time to the north, to your right. We have, right now, there's some real safety and accessibility issues with the current banister on the staircase. This plan addresses both of those. As you can also see, we are going to shrink the columns. They are larger than they need to be from an aesthetic point of view. This will give a nod back to the days of the warehouse, but also by making the columns thinner, still load bearing, but thinner, will have better visibility, better line of sight. And some of that light will come through the building more as well. And then this is a view from the loading deck, back to the south of the building. Again, you get to see sort of that return to the warehouse look. You get to see the open windows and you get to see, start to see some of the pop-up sort of flexible spaces. As you can see, I think I pointed this out. We're really making sure that all the furniture is on wheels because we know how tight the space in that building is. And we are really excited about moving things around so that we can try different services. So here's our timeline and why I'm here with you today. The electrical bids are open for this project. And next month, we expect that the full plan bids will be opened. They'll be going through the regular design review process that will be public, obviously. So we wanted people to hear, we wanted you to hear, the Board of Trustees and then the public as well. And as I said, business as usual through summer reading. And then in August, when kids are back in school is when we'll really kick into that first floor construction prep. And September of 2025 is when we anticipate construction will begin. So our priorities during construction, we're going to keep the same hours. We're going to keep the same staffing. We will keep as much of this as running as we possibly can. We will need to be flexible. And I think one of the things that we really took away from COVID was how quickly the library staff can innovate and try new services. This will give us another opportunity to do that. We are going to keep the building open for those who need it. We have a second and third floor. We will prioritize public spaces on those. And we'll also provide access to youth material, I'm sorry, library materials, again, with a real focus on our youth collection. That is the collection that has the most browsing users and really thinking about how do we create space for that collection, but also for the youth that are playing, that are joining our programs. Obviously, we still will be helping people access computers in the internet using our Wi-Fi. And then we'll continue with programming as our staff capacity and location availability allows. Again, I think we have a lot to build on from COVID. I remember being brand new to the city, calling Doug Holloway and asking, can we do? Storytime is in your park. And how he immediately helped me schedule that. I've been reaching out to directors. They've equally helping, thinking about, well, can we, let's move some of the admin off so we can prioritize public space. This really is the whole city helping to support this work. Accessing the building as promised. This is a photo of where people will be able to enter or when the the current door that's open right now, that will be the door that will be sealed off. We will have people directed to the, to the right where you see a learning lab sign. Right now, that elevator is key to only go to the fourth floor where the learning lab is. We've talked to the learning lab about using that elevator and staircase. They're very supportive as we don't anticipate. This will be too disruptive for their users. But we'll be able to put displays of where, how progress is going, put up some signs so people know what to expect, what's happening behind the plywood. I think will be really important to keep people in on. And then we want to really make sure that we're communicating well with the public. And here's the things that we are going to do because we're currently doing them for all the construction around us and that will amplify. So right now, we have updates in our library newsletters. We will add updates to the city newsletters as well, obviously using library and city social media. We have a construction update page on the web, on our library website, which helps people with closures. The intersection at River and Capitol is open. It's closed. It's open. We're constantly updating the public. We'll continue to do that and the city will start to elevate some of those on the city website as well. We'll have signage at all locations. And then, since I'm talking to you in April and we're really looking at September, we're also coming up with plans for some of our specific key partners. Mentioned learning lab, you're really making sure we're taking into our planning how we can make sure that everybody who uses the Downtown Library is able to continue with as little disruption as possible. And with that, I would be happy to stand for questions and Lindsay would be happy to stand for questions.
Well, thanks for the presentation, all the planning, Jessica, that went into this. It's really good to have you here. I'm sure there are questions and I too love that Elaine is here, given that this began while she was still with us. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Jessica, thanks so much for the information. A quick question is just on the timing. If I understood correctly, the construction and the shutdown of the first floor will be in September of 2025? Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, that is correct. That is our current planning.
Okay. And did we have an estimated timeline for completion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, we anticipate nine to 12 months.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Jessica, thanks for the great presentation. As someone who's endured a home remodel and lived in it at the same time, peace be upon you. It is hard. You will never see as much dust as you will when that thing is over. But I really applaud you for keeping the library open. That's, that is the hard thing to do, is to keep it open, but it's the right thing to do. So thank you. I am curious about how physically you're trying to keep the dust down. I mean, I love the idea that we have a separate entrance. That's really great. There's only so much you can do, but I'm curious if that's been a conversation, especially for employees that are there all the time because that, that can get really rough on your lungs.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I really appreciate you thinking about staff and staff safety. I think this is something that our general contractor has really focused on with the current work. And I imagine that any other contractor going forward with us would have that same approach in prioritizing those abatement, you know, the, the protocol to put in place to make sure that we've got the barriers up and that the cleaning happens. They take such pride in working with us because they are really invested in the mission of the library and have really, I think, gone above and we, I believe, get contractors and organizations that go above and beyond because they do recognize that these are buildings where we are serving the public.
Madam Mayor, I fell off. Oh, you could. Okay. Just a couple of things. Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Yes. Love the staircase. Very reminiscent of Brady Bunch. I'm getting that vibe. I like it a lot. It looks beautiful. And then just a, just a comment. Thank you for all that you do. I know that you're fresh off a listening tour. And I know I was at half of them, but you were at all of them and you did a fabulous job. So much public engagement. I was so proud of our library staff. You can tell that they believe they love what they're doing and it was really inspiring to see people who, who came that wanted to see more of what we do. And so thank you for your time. Those were all after hours. Just appreciate you and your staff and please give them our thanks and our appreciation.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, thank you so much. I'm so excited for the staff. This space will be incredible in terms of what they will be able to do with the public. And, you know, when we've been talking about staff, this will be disruptive. You know, people visit the library not as frequently, you know, our staff are in it every day. And so we really are asking them to be creative and to be flexible and to bear with us as it. And they are so excited about the possibility and what
possibility and what this means for the community of Boise. They're all just equally as appreciative of the investment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, our final item before our executive session, and we've got Stephen Hunt, but I, it says Stephen Hunt on the piece of paper, but I see Elaine Clegg walking up from VRT with an update.
Thank you. Stephen's here as backup for all this stuff I mess up, but decided, because I get so few chances to come back here, that, that I'd give the presentation myself. So, am I supposed to start it, or is somebody else?
Yeah, there's a, there's a button there that you push.
Oh, sorry.
If you wanted, you could also, I mean, you could come from here, too, if you wanted. Then there's a remote control.
Which, we're good, we're good here. Okay. Well, gosh, it's good to be here. It's good to see all of you. Good to be back in City Hall. It's so fun to be here on the night when I find out that all that work we did on the library's been paying off. And, and, you know, I remember taking my kids there when our former library director, Kevin Boo, was just worked in the kids' section, and taking all my kids to that youth section and having so much fun. It's, it's really great to see the library evolving. So we're here tonight, not to talk specifically about budget, but to talk about the things that we've been doing this last year, the performance of it, let you know that we've been in contact with staff, and the budget we'll be proposing is within the 5% that, that's agreed on, that there might be a little room within that, if you guys want to consider something, some additions, and we'll talk about later what those, those possibilities would be. Whoops. Okay. I got the wrong button here. There we go. There we go. So here's the things we're going to cover tonight. Always like to do, I've learned, an intro to VRT, because as much as people think they know who we are and what we do, I find that oftentimes they don't. And then, also, the same with the benefits of transit, and I know all of you, I think, know these, but I think a reminder is never a bad thing. Then we'll talk about the things we've done this year, review our performance, and then, as I said, look ahead. Okay, I am hitting the wrong button every time here. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay. There we go. This one might be better. We'll see. Ha ha, it is. So, just a reminder, VRT is a political subdivision of the state. We were created by a vote of people in both Ada and Canyon County. We do have jurisdiction over public transportation in both counties and are the direct recipient of much of the funding that comes to this region as a result. I will send this, so you guys can have this if you want to look. Here's a little bit more about the history of VRT and how we got to where we are today. As far as governance, we, all cities, counties, highway districts are members, as well as some special members. We have a Board of Directors and Executive Board. Mayor McLean is Chairman of the Board this year, and thank you, Mayor McLean. It's so nice to have someone who's excited about transit and who is willing to step in. It's been really great to have you in that position. We also have Councilmember Morales as the Treasurer, and it's great to have two Boise representatives on, within the officers and on the Executive Board. It's the first time in a bit that we've had that. So thank you. The RAC is a committee of community members, and there's a lot of them that represent Boise interests. Just a reminder, Idaho is the only state that doesn't provide tax, state funding, a dedicated state funding for transit, nor does it extend dedicated local option funding for transit, except if you're a resort city. And frankly, many of the systems in the state are in those resort areas and supported by that. So we're one of only three political subdivisions in the state without any kind of levy authority. So it's been hard to, to respond to growth, and especially now, and recognizing how hard it is for cities at the moment. We're trying to lean in and do everything we can with, with the resources we have to get more ridership. So this is just a little bit about the local funding, and a reminder that we also collect fares and we sell advertising, and in doing that, we're able to generate close to $2 million in addition to what we get contributed to us, and we're looking for ways to grow that. Idaho's been one of the fastest-growing states for a long time, and it's really hard, as I mentioned, to respond to that growth with transit service. And yet, transit will show produces a measurable economic impact for the state, and it can provide congestion mitigation and support jobs and access to jobs for people who might not otherwise be able to, to take a job far away, and then it strengthens local communities in many ways. So thank you for the support that you give to Valley Regional Transit, because without it, frankly, we wouldn't have the benefits that I'll show you here in just a moment. Nationally, the American Public Transportation Association has done a lot of look at the impact of transit on investment, the return on investment, if you will, and their numbers show that for every million dollars invested, there's $5 million indirect, indirect, and induced impacts. We did a study that looked at just the direct and indirect and not the induced, and found that in our region, we, for the 21 million that we invest, we get a 53, almost $53 million return on that investment, so pretty good ROI. And again, that's just the direct and indirect, not the induced. Couple of quick facts that I think are helpful in Idaho, especially 36% of Idahoans can't drive due to age or disability, or lack of, you know, access to a vehicle. Costs to drive a vehicle in Idaho are extremely high, but across this region, 165% of national average at $14,900 per vehicle. And income spent on both transportation and housing in the United States, if you're above 45%, is considered cost burden, and in this region, we're at 52%, and much of the region is much higher than that. We also believe that we already impact congestion, mitigate congestion, but if we were able to invest more, as an example, the Spokane region, which is almost exactly the same size as us, and has very similar demographics, moves about 10 million people a year on their transit system. If we were to move that many, that'd be another 9 million, and we remove 9 million cars from the roads every year. We think that would be a tremendous impact to the good for this region. So for us, it's not just about, let's, you know, can we find more money so that we can grow? It's, can we find more money so that we can have even more important and more meaningful impact on the region in a beneficial way? Already talked about the, the economic impact, and little-known fact, there, there is transit in every legislative district in Idaho, and there's 11 transit systems that have ridership available to the general public. We shared this with the Legislature this year. So, big year for us. The service restructure and rebrand that kicked off in June, I'll talk about it later. We think it's been a big success. There's some headwinds to it, but, but not surprising when you do this big of a restructure. We were recipients, awarded a competitive grant to redo the stop at Town Square Mall. We're, we're doing work now to make sure that we can get that grant over the finish line in terms of getting it, getting the grant agreement signed. We are working our way down Eighth Street with improvements. We finished the intersection at State and 18th, and are moving on to 23rd and 27th. Looking forward to showing off the State and 18th in May, and also showing off the real-time pilot that will be kicking off at those, at that stop at that time. We found these low-profile pole seats, so in places where we can't put, not, either don't have the right-of-way, or right now don't have the funding to put a pad and put a bench, we can at least provide two seats for folks. They've been a big hit, so we're looking to expand that. We applied for a new build grant to complete the design on the State Street corridor so that we would be eligible and shovel-ready for some of the more, the bigger construction grants. And then a really big deal, we just recently completed the purchase of all of the benches in the system. Previously, they were owned by a private company, and VRT got very, very little of the advertising revenue, and by purchasing themselves, we'll now be able to realize all of that advertising revenue ourselves, though we're very excited about that. We'll at least break even this year, and in future years, we're looking for upwards of $250,000 or more each year in advertising revenue from this purchase. Customer service was up 20,000 calls this year, same number of customer service agents, and with that, there were only six more valid complaints than we had last year. We're well below what our targets are for all of this in terms of valid complaints and our people's response to customer service. In addition, our buses are very safe, both safe from accidents, you can see our accident frequency, but also safe from incidents on the bus, especially compared nationally. So I'm going to break this into two parts. We have full numbers from 23 and 24, and we can do a system performance across the system between those two years. Since the service change is not a full year's numbers, but we think it's important to show the impact of the service change as well. So between those two years, 23 and 24, about even on ridership, a little bit of an increase. That middle zone where you see demand response and specialized, we changed how we deliver services in that. And so while it looks like one went way up and one way down, actually, between them, they're about, up about 1%. And, which, because service changes are so hard to pull off and keep ridership is actually a really good sign, because we were able to do a major service change on how we deliver that service and still maintain the ridership. And I'll, I'll show you later, the same, we think, with the, the system itself. So system-wide, between the two years, again, just about 1% growth. We'll dig into those Ada County numbers in the next slide, but you can see that with the service change, we've seen some really big growth on some of our routes. I'll show you even more dramatically how the service change impacted some of those. In Ada County itself, there was a slight decline, and not surprisingly, it was in part because of the service change, in part because of all the construction that's been going on. You'll see State Street is down 5%. State Street's been on detour for almost nine months out of the last year, and we've missed our, our highest, one of our highest ridership stops has been missed during those detours. So despite that, we still have really high productivity on it, and we're confident the ridership will come back once the construction is, is cleared up. It's starting to in the places where it already has. So since the service change, we've, we've have some real bright spots, but we also have some challenges. I'm going to dig into each of these individually. So frequent routes, we did the right thing on those frequent routes by adding, going to 15-minute service. You can see the Fairview is up 13%, Vista's up 3%. State Street, despite the, the challenges with the, with, with the construction, is still is our most productive service and is even better as we expanded the 15-minute service on State Street. So we're excited about that. The added service on Cole Glenwood and Overland were exactly the right things to do. Cole Glenwood now has 30-minute service all day, and we added Saturday service. Overland was extended to Main Street and also had some service enhancements. Both of them are up considerably as a result of these. Enter County routes, the good news for Boise on these is not just that people can get from the rest of the region into Boise, but we're, we were able to use these to provide some service in West Boise, where we had lost some service with some of the service change. So you can see that the, the 42 there picks up a lot of the service along Emerald that was lost when we rerouted the 28, and that the 45 picks up some of the service on Fairview that was lost when we rerouted some other things. Really high productivity on the Franklin, even though, and, and ridership has increased on it. It picked up some of the ridership from the 6, we think. And high productivity on the 17, even though overall, the, the boardings between the 17 and the 1 are down combined. There's more, more than half on the 17, so we didn't lose everyone, and really high productivity because of the way this route is, is designed. And then the new service in West Boise has been very well received. This would have replaced the 8. The 8 used to go north-south, this one goes east-west, but it's up 15% overall. And by the way, City of Meridian also contributes to this route. This one isn't just paid for by Boise. So the, the low spots, again, not surprising. Harris Ranch was consolidated into the 17 in a loop, and all of that ridership obviously was lost. I'll talk later about some ideas about how to recover some of that. Same with the 10 Hill Road, it's down because we made it a peak-hour service that has no midday. Probably the biggest decline is at the end of the day, so we've got some ideas for how to, how to improve that as well, that I'll talk about later. Since the service change, so you saw some numbers before that, that were a little bit different than this, but since the service change, the 20, which used to be the 6, is, is down considerably. This should be a really high-productivity route. It's very similar to the 21, which has seen an increase in ridership and high productivity. So we've got some ideas for how to help people discover it. We think that really is the, the difference here. It used to go downtown, and now it goes crosstown, and people haven't just discovered the benefits of that. There's, this is the new service we started last year. We consolidated many of the senior center services and some of the disability services into a service called Beyond Access that goes across both counties. It's a, a demand-response service. You either call or go on the app and, and book a ride, and so it connects Boise to surrounding areas. For older adults and persons with disabilities in Boise, we think this has picked up some of the coverage that was lost with some of the service change. 31% of the trips were either started or ended in Boise, or, or were all in Boise. And then another real bright spot, to fill in some of those coverage gaps, we expanded the lift connections boundary area, and you can see ridership is up incredibly since the service change. Probably the only cautious note I would, I would say here is that we're not certain that the funding for this is sustainable at this rate of service. So we're going to take a deep look at that in the next few months and make sure that we know that we can continue to sustain this. So with that, I'll take questions just on the ridership part, and then we'll get into what's possible in the future. If you have any questions about those ridership numbers.
And I just want to also be mindful of time. We have 30 minutes for this presentation than an exec, so we've got about 15 minutes more.
Good.
Madam Mayor, if I can just ask one quick question. Elaine, thank you for the presentation so much. Can you just explain what a rider is? Is it one- Can you just explain what a rider is? Is it one person on one segment or a person on multiple?
So the way we count our trips are called unlinked trips, and that means a boarding and a lighting. Even if you alight and then board another bus and go somewhere else. So each trip that is, gets on and off the bus is one rider.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Director. It's a pleasure to serve with you. I just wanted to ask, obviously Harris Ranch, very close to my district, and it's something that I've used heavily. Curious about ridership, grateful that we consolidated. We still have access out there. I'm curious about efforts to engage with all the new riders that are moving into much denser, you know, bustling Barber Valley.
If you don't mind, I'm going to hold that for the next section, because I am going to talk about that.
Madam Mayor, it's good to see you, Elaine. A couple of questions. Thanks for present, for for providing the advanced information. That's always helpful for us to be able to look at and, and, you know, primer, primer discussion. On page five of that, there's the annual ridership by route and the miles. Very, very helpful. And if you need to get back to me on this, I totally understand. I had just a question on the Boise percentages. Does that mean that the route is 100% funded by Boise? I just want to make sure that I am understanding exactly what that is. It's on page five of of the six of the memo that was posted online.
So I don't have the memo in front of me, Stephen. I'm going to ask Stephen to answer that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, well, it's the, what we provided was directed by Schedule A, which is our MOU with the City of Boise, and that is intent, that shows the the ridership in Boise. So it's 100% of the boardings occurred in Boise, so it isn't directly tied to funding, although there is a relationship there, but that percentage isn't specifically tied to the miles, which is what drives funding. That's the percent of boardings that occurred within the city across the different routes.
That makes sense. Okay. I've got another one. He might want to phone a friend. So I am curious because Boise gives such a dedicated amount to public transportation. It's a priority. We know it's a priority. Does our, does the funding go towards Boise-only routes? Or does that funding help alleviate costs in other parts of the of the valley, like for Ada County?
It doesn't alleviate costs in other part of the valley, but it does help pay for those inter-county routes. And only the mileage that occurs in Boise, but also the facilities at either end of those, because those are needed to make those routes work.
Okay, one more. And then do we have a price per ride? In other words, how much is the city Boise paying per ride?
Overall, the economic impact analysis that we did, that I showed you earlier, is showing somewhere around $19 per ride, all in, and that's including all of the capital expenditures, as well as the revenue spent on operating. So I, we haven't broken out the operating expenditures yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, can I have a clarifying question on that? Councilmember, well, that's, are you interested in the cost, in the cost to the City of Boise per boarding? Because that, because what the numbers that Elaine was talking about is the total cost, so that would include all local and federal. I just want to clarify, if you're interested in the cost, in the local cost that the City of Boise contributes per boarding within the City of Boise.
Madam Mayor, yes, thank you for reading my mind. That's exactly what I'm interested in.
Okay, we can get that.
Thank you.
We we can get that. Thank you. All right. Welcome, Councilmember Nash. So quick, quick look ahead. We have some priorities that we'd like to look at, and I'll go through these one by one as well. So fine-tuning. And one of the things, these are within identified resources, so we're not asking anyone for more funding for these. We are going to add an additional trip to the Route 10, likely in October. Move it back down to 545 again. We think that that will dramatically increase the the ridership on that particular route. Route 20, I I mentioned, just really came in lower than we expected. We're going to do some targeted outreach. We're going to market to residential, commercial, and educational centers along the corridor. We're going to do research on their destinations along the corridor and share that with the neighborhood, and then do travel training for people that we find that are interested in trying it. So we're going to, we've not done this kind of really targeted educational outreach on one route before. We're going to try that and see if if we can have an impact. We think it will. Also, projects underway that we're not asking for more funding from the City of Boise. The, we are electrifying Main Street Station. I want, just as the library is also going to be partially closed during construction, so will Main Street Station. The buses for the first three months will be all staging on the street, and then four of the buses will still be staging on the street for the the last part of it. During this, we'll add on-route charging downstairs. The customer service and the bathrooms and all of that will be open during construction. As I mentioned, we finished the 18th and State intersection. We're moving on to 23rd and 27th and beginning work on some of the intersections further out as well. I mentioned the bench project where we purchased all the benches. We're looking now to see where we can identify spots to put benches that won't take a lot of infrastructure investment and try to expand the number of benches that we have. We're integrating Lime into our app so that people can get that first mile, last mile. Or at least we're working on that, and we're expanding our pass programs. We're also in conversation with a couple of partners for service programs. One of those is Micron, one is St. Luke's, where we'd be able to expand service with them helping with the contribution for that. One of the things that could speed up the bus stop amenities is one-time funding for a larger project to do this. Right now, we do about $300,000 a year on bus stops. If we could do a bigger project, we'd find some efficiencies, we think, and we could get a lot more done. So as you guys are thinking about budget, if there is a little bit of one-time somewhere and you're interested, we'd love to work with you on trying to figure out if there's a a project here that we could do. Longer term, and this gets to your question, Councilmember Morales, we think the 17 is a really perfect route to try counterclockwise service, clockwise and counterclockwise service on. So you would have a bus leave Main Street every half hour, one would go clockwise, the next half hour would go counterclockwise. So Harris Ranch itself would have half-hour service every hour, and you could still get from East Boise to the Mesa and Mesa to East Boise on one trip. So again, that's a longer-term thing. It will need more base funding, but we're looking into ways, not just with the city, to potentially work on that. And then always adjusting services, Saturday, Sunday, you can see the potentially Sunday at some point, the evening, you can see those impacts that it had on the 29 and the 21. The other thing we'd like to explore as soon as we think it's it's feasible financially is longer 15-minute span on all of those best-in-class routes. We're also working on a project to bring escalators to Main Street. This is not funding from the City of Boise. We're working with non-city partners, but we think it would really enhance Main Street if we could do that. Questions? I guess I got yours.
Yeah, I think people might ask questions as we are going. Anything else for now?
Madam Mayor, one, I apologize if you covered this before I was here, so if I did, I'll just, I'll just check the tape when I'm after today. I was talking to Councilmember Halliburton a little while ago about Lime and that contract and what work you've done with them and how we could better integrate
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The Lime contract.
A contract with who?
Lime.
Lime Scooters.
Oh, no, we don't have a contract. Oh, the contract with Lime is for advertising on our bike racks. And so, yes, we do have, we worked with the city to do that.
Elaine, there's another question. I'm going to just repeat it. The council president is asking if there's work that could be done to better integrate the usage of Lime in our city with the bus system.
Absolutely. I would love to have a conversation about that. Sorry, I I was not quite hearing you.
But that's something that would be a longer conversation, correct?
Yeah, would be a longer conversation, but I think, I think there's a real opportunity to better integrate it and and better integrate how we do all of the management of it, including how it's on apps and all those things.
Bree can help us with that from our end.
Yeah.
Great.
So next steps, there's a public hearing next week, so you get to hear from the public about all of these things. And then excited to work with you during the 2026 budget development process to see if there's any of these sort of additional add-ons that are of interest or or could, you know, fit within your, what you can do this year. So thank you so much for having me. It's great to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an executive session, so I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, pursuant to Idaho Code Section 7420C1C, I move to enter into executive session to communicate with legal counsel on acquiring an interest in real property.
Second. We have a motion, a second clerk?
Willis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, we will be back here at 6:00.